I've been doing that for years.
Have you ever been?
No. I keep telling, do I have to keep talking?
I've only ever done one cruise.
No, you've got to cruise.
You're going five years ago with kids.
You know when I started taking it? The first time I had COVID, I started taking it and I just never quit taking it yet because one of the problems with COVID is blood clots and it causes strokes and pulmonary embolism. First time I got sick was as soon as I came down with it and tested positive, I started taking it and then I just hadn't quit.
Yeah.
I kept taking them.
Okay.
Blood pressure. And I never really have understood many of the symptoms.
It's impossible not to. You know.
What I thought, did you want to be your...
Kristen probably knows. Probably Kristen's Amazon shopping.
Yeah.
She had it delivered. The box is over there by the door.
All right. We'll have our invocation by Commissioner Saffley.
Okay. It's about our heads. Dear my Father, Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day and we thank you for the opportunity to come and serve our community and we just pray, Lord, that you will guide us in our decisions and in our words and help us to do what's best, not just for a few, but for everyone in our community. And I pray that you just help us to do that each and every time we come here to meet, Lord, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Ashworth?
Here.
Commissioner Thorne? Commissioner Orne?
Here.
Commissioner Max?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan? Commissioner Hopkins? Commissioner Skene?
Here.
Commissioner Saffley?
Here.
All righty, has everybody had time to review the minutes from last month?
Yes, sir.
Is there approval?
Motion to approve.
Sir.
Commissioner Saffley?
Aye.
Commissioner Orne?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Aye.
Commissioner Skene?
Aye.
First item on our agenda tonight is PL 1901 for 2557 West Street. Can you speak to us on that?
Yes, sir. This is 1901. The request is for fence height variance for a gate on the driveway at the property you've mentioned. Devin Dorfert was the applicant representing the owner. As I mentioned, they are proposing a new fence, all of which will be in conformance other than at the driveway where the gate is proposed to be located. The next two applications are variances, so I'll read these ones for the record tonight. But for any approval or denial of an item, steer us in this direction that special conditions and circumstances exist, that for real use of land, structures, facilities of all are not generally applicable to other land, structures, or building in the same district, that the literal enforcement provisions and standards would deprive the applicant of rights commonly to enjoy by their properties within the same district under the terms of disordinance. Special conditions and circumstances do not result in actually not face upon active considerations. Regarding the variance request, would not infringe any special privileges otherwise in the absence of ordinance, other land, structures, or buildings in the same district. As I mentioned, it is just for the gate along the driveway and the pictures in your staff report has used to concede exceed the full potential allowance. The driveway is off of West Center Street. It is a triple frontage lot, which is a vibrator for a fence. After speaking with the applicant, the only staff condition we would recommend is that the gate be offset of property or curb line enough so when it's fully open, it would not extend into traffic. He seemed to think this was doable, where he planned to be gate. And so the west center's curb cut is here and in the process of forming a new driveway where it's to be located. And I did propose a motion to approve, deny, or table your staff report. There is an applicant here tonight available if you got any questions.
All right. Any questions for Austin? Advocate, please come forward, state your name and address.
Hey, I'm Natalie Brewer, 2557 West Street.
It was just the height of the gate is the issue.
Is the gate going to be just like the one in the picture or is that what it's?
Yeah.
How much taller is it than?
I think six feet in the middle. So it'd be two foot above the allowance on that.
So there used to be a picket fence. I don't know if y'all need me to tell you this. There used to be a picket fence that went all the way around and we're essentially replacing that. But the way that it's set, because it's three triple frontage, I think was the term, there's not really a way to just do like a backyard because there's not a back door to the house. So we're just kind of enclosing the entire corner. And so the gate will just enclose the driveway. So that's the point, just for safety.
Austin mentioned his recommendation was for the gate not to protrude in the...
Yeah, so each side is seven feet, so it's 14 feet across and it'll be set back 10 feet, so it'll have a three-foot clearance from the curb. Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this item? Please come forward, state your name.
Make a motion to approve a fence height variance for a gate as described in the attached exhibits. The subject property is located on the west side of West Street, south of Center Street, and based upon the following findings, A through D, and the stipulation that it does not extend into the street.
Commissioner Saffley?
Aye.
Commissioner Orne?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Aye.
All righty, that motion passes. Our next item on the agenda is PL 1906, 677 Riker Drive.
Yes, sir. PL 1906 is a request for a fence variance to encroach beyond the allowed 10-foot and the required front yard setback at 677 Riker Drive. I will inform you of the address here tonight representing the application. The approval or denial criteria is the same as the previous application, but I will steer you onto the legal criteria for approval or denial. As you can see on the exhibit, the fence is existing. The applicant's bought the home, the fence was part of the package when the home was sold, so I think they assumed it was permitted and it wasn't. But we were discovering the pool application for the name. As you can see, the fence is 37-foot back from the curb. We did a site visit and we did a sound check on the two corners. There are similar fences in the subdivision, but this being a corner lot, we do allow 10-foot of clearance off the side of the home, but this does exceed that of the 35 feet. As I mentioned, the builder is one of the defense subs, that's the bit of where we're at, of the confusion that's already being known. And I did propose a motion to approve an hour table in the last session. If you got any questions.
Any questions for Austin? All right, would the applicant please come forward, state your name and address?
Lauren Ward, 677 Riker.
I guess it's, like Austin said, popped up when you were doing a pool permit and... Do what he's supposed to do.
Built in 2020.
All right. So it looks like you just want to leave the fence how it is, is basically what the request is.
We moved the front fence up just far enough to get the pool filters and stuff behind the fence.
Okay, yes, sir.
Like eight feet up or something like 10 feet.
Anybody have any questions for that? Is anyone here to speak for or against this item? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a fence variance to encroach 10 feet setback. Fence is described in the attached exhibits. The subject property is parcel number 3081122600011500. It's located on the south side of Riker, west of Perry Place Drive, based upon findings A through D.
Second.
Motion is second.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Ashworth?
Aye.
Commissioner Skene?
Aye.
All righty, that motion passes and approved. All right, next item on the agenda is PL 1900 Lauderdale Lot 1.
Yes, sir. PL 1900 is a one-lot final subdivision request for the property in your staff report. The proposal is to locate the lot of 27 acres. Lauderdale is the owner of the property currently. The home is existing. This is the home at the corner of Mount Pleasant and East Valley Street. It's currently tied in with a larger piece of property surrounding it. And so the current zoning of that lot is R12, meaning a 12,000 square foot lot. So what Mr. Lauderdale is proposing is just to isolate the home on a smaller lot to fit the zone. He just basically wants to create a 12,000 square foot lot for the home to be located on and free up the rest of the property for future use. As I mentioned, the R12 zoning is a 12,000 square foot lot, so that's kind of what we got the lot size from. Since the road is already embraced and sewer water, we're not going to provide an improvement to the lot. He's just simply wanting to divide it off, so the request is to divide it off from that larger parcel and meeting the setbacks of the existing lot on Mount Pleasant and East Valley Street. Joe Frank's here tonight representing his brother. I did provide a motion in your staff report and I'm available if you got any questions.
Okay. I think you know how this works, so. I said, I think you know how this works, so.
Yeah. Joe Lauderdale, 231 West Center Street. My brother decided he's going to go off on a fishing trip, so he wanted me to come down here and be present for this. But he is separating, as Austin said, separating this house that he has there on the corner just north of the co-op into one lot by itself.
Any questions for that? Thank you, Mr. Saffley. Is anybody here to speak for or against this item? Please come forward, state your name and address. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to grant final plat approval for Lauderdale Mount Pleasant Road, one-lot subdivision, one-lot 0.27 total acres located on the north side of Alley Street, west of Mount Pleasant in Section 16, Township 3, Range 7, based upon a finding that the submitted plat generally conforms to the requirements of the city's codes and ordinances, subject to Conditions 1 through 3 in the staff report.
Second.
Commissioner Saffley?
Aye.
Commissioner Orne?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Aye.
Commissioner Skene?
All righty, that item passes. Next item on the agenda tonight is PL 1904, southeast corner of McInville and 269.
Yes, sir. PL 1904 is the first of kind of a two-part application tonight. The preliminary plat for the entire parcel, the whole, and the next application we have from the back lot, and I'll explain that later. The first application, 1904, is the preliminary plat request for the southeast corner of McInville and 269. Alex Yagney is here tonight from Civil Link representing the owner of the property. With the preliminary plat request, it's five lots of 21.34 acres. The current zoning of this parcel is C2 Highway Commercial, and so the both requirements you see in your staff report are for that C2 zoning. I did in the discussion portion, we don't do many preliminary plats. Most of the things we see are kind of the PUD or plan development. So this is a straight subdivision request. And so then the discussion piece is the general approval or denial criteria for a preliminary plat. About the parcel, this is located behind the intergy substation on Green T Road. And so the lot is odd shaped, and so the final plat request that is the next application is for Lot 1. There's a national retailer that's active planning to build on that site. This does propose to build a new city street currently, propose as Harvest Ridge Road. And lots 2 through 5 would be out parcel lots with frontage on McInville Road, but their only access point would be through the new city street. There would be no curb cuts on either Green T or on McInville Road because of the I-269 block of the way. The five lots are proposed in a range like they are. Lot 1 actually extends all the way back to Green T Road. Reason for that is the retailer does want signage on Green T Road, so in order to not have off-site signage, that little strip next to the road is actually a part of Lot 1. The proposed right-of-way 60 feet and thanks to Civil Link for turning that around so quick is what's required for the commercial development to be expected to turn lane to be required on Harvest Ridge on Green T Road. So it'll be three lanes going up and down that road. And I've got the preliminary site plan if you want to see how the circulation is going to work, but with it only, the road basically dead-ending into Lot 1, the circulation pattern is through their site plan, so it's being coordinated at the same time. The only active lot of development is that Lot 1, 2 through 5, there's no active plans for final plat. But that road, the new road to be serviced is all the improvements on Green T Road and the construction for water and sewer and the new city street would all be a part of that first application. All the improvements will be done as a part of that first phase to include the tie-in to the roundabout. I did propose motions to approve or deny in your staff report. And as you can see on the aerial, the odd shape of the lot, the side station is kind of located in a one-sided street that we see. It's not very popular with developers, but that's the only way they could actively develop this site. Alex is here tonight from Civil Link representing the owner. I'm going to look if you got any questions.
I have a question. With the turn-down lane on Green T for that lot, and there's a turn-down lane in front of the Fieldhouse Development. He or who's going to... Energy is probably not going to do a turn-down lane in front of their substation.
It's probably somewhere to consider in the city, just to match the cross-section, kind of like we're doing on McInville for Walmart. There's a gap piece, the county's actually partnering with us to fix that last little gap piece, just to fix it.
So the street you're talking about coming in is going to come in on the east side of that property closer to the, on the backside of the lot, it's close to the substation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
From Green T?
Yes, sir.
Coming in right here.
If you look on the aerial here on the screen, the road...
You want to zoom in on that zone?
So you can see that M-Dot right-of-way actually protrudes all the way to this portion of the site, so the road improvement, I'm going to pull up on that arrow here like it was here. Visual fronter shot access. So you can see the road improvement on the M-Dot section here is already complete. So what this road improvement will do is basically re-strike this and tie on to an additional lane so that this entire portion of the site will be improved all the way back. And the road, Mistress Athlete, is going to be over here.
Okay.
And the lots that I mentioned, 2 through 5 here, will visually be able to be seen from McInville, but there will be no access back. All the access will be internal. And then the retailer site will be remaining here.
Do they all the improvements and stuff are being done on them?
So the remaining lots are those going, those will be sold for individual build-outs? Is that...
It's all already zoned, C2, is there a zoning change or anything? Would the applicant representative, please come up and state your name?
I'm Alexander Gagne at 1058 Greenwich Drive.
I butchered it last night, sorry.
Is there any other details that you'd like to add or Austin covered all or...
I think you hit everything on there.
Do I have any questions for the applicant? Is anybody here to speak for or against this item? Please come forward, state your name and address. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to grant preliminary plat approval for the southeast corner of McInville and 269, consisting of five lots on 21.34 acres, as described on the attached exhibits. And the proposed subdivision is keeping with the general character of the development in the area and that it is in the best of the public. The site is suitable for the proposed development purposes.
Commissioner Saffley?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan? Orne?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Aye.
Commissioner Skene?
Aye.
Next item, as Austin mentioned, kind of ties into this, the same property, it's PL 1905.
Yes, sir. As I mentioned, this is a companion application, but this is the request for final plat of that one lot. And this will include all the construction we talked about and the construction of the road and the water that will be served on that lot. But the same old requirement from the C2 commercial district also acts through the net. And then for the discussion portion, when the final plat conforms to that of the preliminary plat, the only story that we shall prove it. And my mind, this does substantially conform to that of the C2, so it doesn't like we're at in the house here if you got any questions.
Anybody here to speak for or against this item? Please come forward, state your name. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to recommend approval of a final plat application for the southeast corner of McInville and 269, consisting of one lot on 12.68 acres, as described on the attached exhibits, based on the staff conditions listed in the staff report, 1 through 11, or 13.
Second. Commissioner Saffley?
Aye.
Commissioner Orne?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Aye.
Commissioner Skene?
Aye.
All right, that item passes. Next item on the docket is PL 1908 Scott Meadows Phase 2.
1908 is a request for final plat approval for the second phase of Scott Meadows subdivision, North Book Road, East Oak Crossing Drive. Alex is here again tonight representing the owner of the property. With the PUD preliminary plat approval came when the PUD's text was approved. And this one, an interesting point on this plat, you'll notice that the lots on the frontage go is some floodplains in the rear of the lots. And so in an effort to, one, not confuse these lots to be associated with a floodplain at all, they split lots 58 to 62 into two areas. To, will still require pitch boil obligations, of course, but BEMA, if a lot touches the floodplain, even if the home well outside of it, flood insurance is required from the mortgage company. And so in an effort to relieve the mortgage of companies requiring support for that, the proposal is to split the two lots into Area A, Area B. The lots will be under common ownership and deemed restricted to never be sold. When 62's sold, 62A has to be sold, but it's just an effort to save those folks the hassle of having to not get flood insurance when it's elevated. Lot 63 will require an elevation certificate and possibly flood insurance if the mortgage company requires. But in an effort to keep that requirement off of 58 through 62, that's why the lots aren't laid out like they are. That's shown on the preliminary plat when the PUD's text came through, I just thought you might want to know why it's split up like that. The road is already constructed. We will bond the sidewalks and/or any road improvements that are not in there, but that might be, it would be included in the existing letter of credit. I did propose motion in your staff report. This does fit the preliminary plat approved with the PUD, so I'm available if you got any questions.
That's interesting with the A, or the 58, A and B or whatever he has. It's a good strategy for the future homeowner.
Otherwise, they have to do a letter of map amendment or map revision, which is additional expense to get that portion. Get going, Gagne.
Anybody have any questions for Austin? Okay. If anybody here to speak for or against this item, please come forward, state your name. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of a final plat approval for the Scott Meadows Phase 2 final plat by Nick Grunen, representing the owner. The subject property, portion of parcel number 3085150002. Parcel number 308614000700. Parcel number 308614000. Located on the north side of West Oak Grove, east of Oak Grove, no, east of Oak Crossing Drive and south of West Commerce Street, based on staff conditions listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Saffley?
Aye.
Commissioner Orne?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Aye.
Commissioner Skene?
Aye.
That item passes. And the next thing is update on the comprehensive plan with Orion planning.
Yes, sir. Bob and his team have done hard work, come back and forth with us on your feedback on the survey, on our exercise we did with everyone. And so Bob's here for that paper on where we're at.
Thank y'all for having me. Can I plug in a crosstalk?
I'm looking at my ear.
You're out?
I will be out. I can just stand.
Mike's still on.
It's been a week, so we're not used to it, but it's not a big deal.
No. Be in trouble if it was.
Thanks for taking a few minutes at the end of your meeting to allow me to update you on where we stand on updating your comprehensive plan, or I should say revising it, taking the plan and bringing it from its current status to something that is valid and you can use. So as my technology turns up at speed here, just a reminder, you've had a document produced for you back in 19, 2019 and 2020 during the pandemic. And it is, it was at that time, it was intended... And during the pandemic, and it is, it was, at that time, it was intended to be a, uh, major update to the comprehensive plan. Hang on, I can't do two things at once.
Looks like you have a key stuck.
You have to give a key stuck.
It's, uh, hang on one second. We're going to do it with volume. Okay, one more time. Patient. Okay. And why is that doing that? Mr. Chairman, bear with me. Okay, maybe this will work now. So, uh, 2019, 2020, uh, you began, uh, update to the comprehensive plan. And unfortunately, it was a victim of somewhat of the, uh, of the pandemic. And it, uh, had a good framework, a solid framework for comprehensive plan, which would include looking at economy, environment, uh, projecting growth, although it did, they did not project growth in the plan. We have now projected growth. And, uh, looking at land use and taking a long range, 20-year look at the community. So the framework is there i- in the document, but it was, um, uh, it was weak on pu- input and engagement. So we were asked to come in and take the document that you had from the prior group and make it current and make it valid and make it a useful document. So that's what we've been involved in doing over about the last six months. And I hope that my, this is, for some reason, is not showing the, uh, proper screen, so let's see if we can get a view. Let's get a two-page. Alright, do you have this one up on your computer? The one I sent? So in the process of, uh, going forward and working with the comprehensive plan, we wanted to hit those, uh, that, that primary element of engagement, which we, uh, as you'll recall, our exercise, um, several, um, about six weeks ago, where we gathered here and we looked at the growth projections of the city and we began to lay out, now how can I advance that? Yeah, just scroll to the second page. This is a report and, uh, have they gotten a link to this yet? Okay, so that you'll get a report. This is the, the results of the time we spent together that afternoon here, uh, as we considered growth projections for Hernando and then trying to get to a point of laying out the future of the city. So without going into too much detail, let me remind you of what we did and now where we are headed with the project because we're moving into some of the final stages of it. So the link you'll get will be a report. It'll be the memorandum of what we did, uh, in the workshop, the growth projections. Go ahead and advance it and you can click on through. Our group, we, and we looked at, um, uh, the status we're in. You'll see on the lower right, we were in the engagement process at that point and we're in the latter two, latter, next step now, revising the future development mapping and adjusting the implementation. Now, the reason we're spending time together now, because you're going to see all this and you're going to be asked to adopt it at some point, revise it, comment on it and adopt it. So it's very important and I don't want to hit you with it cold in two months and, uh, so you get some preview of what's coming. So, uh, we did do a community survey. This was lacking in the last effort. Uh, we got, we got a modest result in the survey, but we got a very, very good sampling and what we consider very valid results. So when you see the link, you'll see, um, see the report, you'll see all the, uh, survey results summarized. There won't be a lot of surprises there for you. Uh, it will highlight the important things about Hernando, town square, schools, parks and green spaces, people really, really value, uh, shows up in the survey. Small town feel is very, very important. Uh, there's a, um, expression of a high quality of life in, in the, uh, city of Hernando and then you can advance. And you can't see, the, the slides are, you, you'll be able to see them on the link, but in the upper left-hand corner, we ask the survey respondents to prioritize what were the most important elements about the future of the city of Hernando. And the very top one is preservation of open space, uh, and environmental aspects of the community. That, that rose to the top and then all those elements are important there. High-quality design, all of those things are important, but it did rise to the top. And you can skip on through. You can look at the survey results.
Bob, can I just, just say something about that real quick?
Yeah.
Something that us as a planning commission, we need to put pressure on these people that are present these PUDs to, to include some real open space and some parks. That's something I think we really need to do. Because if you don't, they're not going to come in and bring that and, and throw a park in there. That's the only way we're going to get it. So I just wanted to get that out.
That, it, it's a, it's two sides of a coin. There's a, there's a public side of it, you know, supporting existing public parks and then acquiring those future parks, which is part of the exercise we did together when we laid our Legos out. And you'll see that in the maps in just a moment. Um, the slides are a little small, so you can't see them, but you, you'll see all of that. The, the point is that we have some valid input from the community to plan with. And if you can blow up the lower right-hand side, can you make that happen? This is where we began to project growth, uh, out into the future to 2045. By the way, we're calling the plans Hernando Horizons 2045, rather than the Hernando Comprehensive Plan. We try to put a brand on it and this is, uh, an initiative and an effort for quality growth going forward. You'll see the, we do, uh, several methods of projecting growth, but you will see there, um, the three methods and probably will lean to the high side. All things remaining the same and maybe even a little bit higher than what we projected there. But from current population of 18, five, adding an additional six to eight thousand people over the next 20 years is very, very likely in the city's future. Barring, you know, all things remaining the same, uh, barring some disaster of some sort. And then go on to the next, uh, slide after that. There we go. So, um, I won't drill down too deep into that. I'll get to the exercise point, uh, part of it. We, we did map all the existing land use in the community and have identified all the vacant developable land in the community. So we can tell, it's supply and demand. We can take the demand projection for growth and the supply of land and, uh, begin to formulate how the community should and would grow. Now, the way we did that with y'all, this is a reminder, those, I think everybody was here, most everybody was here. The way that we did that with y'all and the others, go to the next slide, is we created a, um, a growth scenario. And basically, if you'll zoom to the upper right-hand, uh, point of the slide, the growth scenario we had you look at was, uh, two phases from 2025 to 2035 and then again from 2035 to 2045. And each, each of those increments to add a total of 1,500 housing units along with some major commercial development, parks and green spaces you'll see on the slide, also institutions. This was, these were our growth scenarios and you'll click next one, Austin. We did that by means of Legos. I hope you found that engaging. We've used it multiple places. And, uh, this was your, this was your game piece and you had a, a financial component in there because you had to make the finances have to work too. And essentially what the finance component of this shows is if it's all the large lot, kind of sprawl development, ultimately there's a real cost burden on the, uh, public treasury. So, uh, fitting in appropriate, uh, commercial activities along with mixed-use growth in, interspersed in there to equal out the, uh, financing going forward. So go ahead to the next one, Austin. This is, this is, uh, the, uh, the folks that work here. We had four teams. We did the Legos and you'll click another one. And that is your team one, two, three and four. I don't know who team one was, but they had the, by far, the, the best layout of the, uh, of the city, accounting for the planning values and the goals that were revealed in that survey. So, uh, what we have done, and I can't, I'm sorry, I can't pull it up on my computer because it'll make that funny noise and I don't know what's going on with that computer. But what we have created is a draft future land use map from, uh, the results. Did I send it to you?
Yeah, I did.
Super. Yes. So the, the existing plan that you have done in 2019, 2020, this was a very weak component of it. It wasn't, um, it wasn't realistic in many ways. So what we have done now is taken the engagement and the inputs and the proper projections and we have applied those various place types to a new future land use map. And you will see the red being some form of commercial, the orange being traditional neighborhood development. And most of the new growth, a lot of the new growth was occurring in the I-269 corridor there. And the last question, do you happen to have the annotated version of what I did? Pull that up real quick. So to, to draw.
You asked me to mark up.
The document I sent you that I had comments in? Yep. Alright, so this is the plan, uh, as you have it now. And you'll see a lot of little purple dots as you, as Austin begins scrolling through. This is the document we are going to revise. And as you go down to the, to the, uh, future land use map in that plan, Austin, come on down. Uh, this is the, the map that is in the document now, right there. The prior one we just looked at is a major revision and a reconfiguration of that map. It'll be different than that. We will still use the place types. You can scroll down with the, uh, place type approach to designating the future land uses. Scroll it on down. And, uh, we'll tweak on that. We're going to do some revision in these components. And, uh, ultimately we will have an updated version of this document and it'll be Hernando Horizons 2045. So pardon that muddled presentation. I was off balance from my own computer not working properly, but that's what we've done. I'm trying to sort of set the stage that we're, we're updating this document from 2019, 2020. Uh, we're doing it by means of input, the input that you all have given, uh, the public surveys that we had, bringing all the projections up to date, projecting properly and then presenting a plan that is intended, designed to guide your zoning, your decision-making, and drive the character of development in a way that is, um, uh, judged desirable by the city. So that's where we are. Um, that's my, that's my 10 minutes worth. Does that cover everything?
Yeah, that's the next step is we'll set up a link and ask y'all to mark it up. So if you like, don't like, want us to fan on or we need less of anything. It will have probably 45 days, 60 days of that, just time to cut it out. Do the same thing with the board and then we'll take all that back, revise, and then the documents become public and then advertise for some public input that's manageable. Because at this point, it's the document we like, y'all like and the board likes. Take the public feedback and tweak and then adopt. So that's the next four months, five months.
Uh, no, it'll be, we're hoping early fall, we're targeting early fall to, to be done. Late summer, early fall, we'd like to have the draft and, and wrap the project up. Yep. Thoughts, comments, questions, uh, through that?
The, um, what was the deal, Austin, with the, the last, the last one that came, you know, the, it was, uh, I was thinking it was place types and it wasn't, is it the same?
So that was one of our biggest complaints, is not the right word, but the place types were very generic. And I told Bob, we need numbers, like density numbers or max lot area. We need to quantify what these things mean. So if it's a rural place type, what does rural mean? What does that mean? And I think we've done that.
Okay.
Yeah, we were, we're going to apply, we're going to use, again, the framework is there, but it's that kind of detail that you need to make the thing functional. So, uh, we're arranging to provide that type of detail to those place types. Yeah. Good comment. That's all I have for you. Again, didn't want you to be aware, it's on the hor- it's on the horizon. Hernando Horizon is on the horizon, uh, is coming to you, uh, late summer and, and we'll go from there.
At least you didn't use that.
Yeah, didn't you, huh?
Hernando.
That's all I have for you. If, if you, if you could, could you forward them the link to the document, uh, to the report? This will be the engagement report. It'll just give you the background, the survey. It's pretty interesting information.
Thank you, Bob.
Hopefully it'll help you as a commissioner to do your, do your job.
If you send me the latest growth, I know we had a few tweaks. That way I'll make sure I'm sharing the right one.
The one I sent today.
Today.
Yes. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Motion, buddy?
Motion.
Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you. Russell said, Paul, you need to get that up.
You could probably make seven thirty.
Nah.